For Shane, or you want to start with Adam?
Just well.
Okay.
Fledge of allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, thank you for this day and all of our blessings, and help us to do the good of the city, in Jesus' name, amen.
Thanks for joining us, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, how you guys doing tonight? Good, you?
That's a really small crit there.
Yes, it is.
I did that for you, Jody. Item C, approval of agenda.
Let me commotionally approve the agenda for the March 8, 2021 Planning Commission meeting.
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I will also vote for that.
Item D, citizens' comments. See none, unless the mayor would like to speak?
I don't think I've gotten to speak to you guys yet. I formally introduced myself to all of you. I just really just want to say hi. I don't know if there's any questions that you might have for me, or the governing body, and different things. I know you guys probably have my number, or you know where to find my number, but is there anything that you guys might be questioning, and different developments that are going around? I'm pretty in tuned, and different projects that are going on? Nothing? Lynn, you guys are an amazing crowd.
Well, and your protege keeps us pretty well informed.
He's the best guy we can find, so, no, hey, well, okay, well, no, I thank you guys for everything that you're doing, I really appreciate it, and Mike is great, so.
I'm happy to go ahead.
And we're getting a turkey for Thanksgiving, and a ham for Christmas.
Oh, well, I'll put that on next to the meat.
This way it used to be.
There you go.
Would you like to close the citizens' comments?
I don't see any, so I think we will.
All right. Item E, approval of the minutes, and this is the regular meeting minutes from February 8, 2021, and we just reviewed the subdivision regulations for that meeting, so we just looked for approval.
Hold on, can motionally approve the minutes?
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item F, border zone appeals, there are none, old business, currently there are none, new business, what we're going to do today is review the comprehensive plan, this is going to be item H1. So, quick background, a comprehensive plan is a plan which outlines the goals and ideals of the city. The comprehensive plan has state guidelines, what needs to be entailed in the plan, but is not limited to this, as the city can add more for guiding purposes. Comprehensive plans are legislative in nature, meaning the comprehensive plan is by and large a set of regulatory laws that are to be used for zoning purposes, land use regulating, and even the placement of new public buildings. The city of Goddard adopted the comprehensive plan in 2015. According to Kansas statutes annotated 12-747, at least once each year, the planning commission shall review or reconsider the plan or any part thereof, and may propose amendments, extensions, or additions to the same. The procedure for the adoption of any such amendment, extension, or addition to any plan or part thereof shall be the same as that required for the adoption of the original plan or a part thereof. And that is basically entailed when we did our review this year and last year of those subdivision regulations, that is considered a portion of the comprehensive plan, and therefore falls under that state guideline. So you can either review all of it, or just a portion of it, or as much or as little as you want. But you have to review some of it, you can't review none of it, so that is a requirement. For adoption, or amendments, or anything else, it's kind of similar to a zoning regulation, you would basically have to first review it by, publish it in the city newspaper, review it by planning commission, approve it, and then it would go before the governing body for final adoption, after which it would get published again, and thirty days after it'd become finalized. So, a quick review, this is what's currently in the comprehensive plan, you have a background for planning, goals and objectives, demographic patterns, land use, housing, transportation, public facilities, and plan implementation. Those are broad goals, the comprehensive plan is about 155 pages, it has deals of soil composition, and demographic patterns, trends, economic, macroeconomic, microeconomic goals, and there's a lot that goes into the comprehensive plan. It's more as a guiding principle, but it can be used, as I said, for legislative purposes. Sometimes the Kansas Supreme Court will review the comprehensive plan of a city to make determinations on zoning. Spot zoning, as you broadly know, is generally speaking somewhat illegal, but the planning, or the state legislature will say, if it's in line with the comprehensive plan, it's considered generally acceptable. For most portions, they'll review the comprehensive plan and make a determination if it's considered unreasonable, and that's from a Supreme Court adoption in 1926, where zoning has to be considered reasonable. So, for health, safety, and welfare, it's usually brought by and large, home rule is applied, so a planning commission, governing body, if they say this is what the zoning is, then that's what it is. If it's considered unreasonable, then at some point the state court might step in and say, that was an unreasonable rezoning, or that was an unreasonable zoning, and they may overturn it, so. Background for planning, so a community, A community was defined in 1993 on the USDA Yearbook for Agriculture, as people who have common laws, interests, hopes, but not necessarily the same viewpoints, resources, or awareness of change and needs. And in 1968, Garrett Hardin tragedy, in his book Tragedy of Commons, which I had to read three times in three separate classes in my undergrad, he defined mutual coercion as, you agree you cannot do something that would impact me negatively, and I agree to do the same. So, a city creates value by creating a level of stability, and that's why we're seeing more and more people move to cities, because you're saying that you can't put up a purple and pink dot fence, and I will also not put up a purple and pink dot fence, I will not paint my house yellow with green stripes, and you will not paint your house yellow with green stripes. That creates value because it creates stability. Also, we have a police department, we have zoning, we have a planning commission with regulatory authority, and a governing body, and so those things by and large help define and create stability within a city, which generates a lot of value, especially land value and real estate value. So, number two, goals and objectives actually breaks down even more into economic development, housing, transportation, which seems a little bit redundant, but it is, in terms of it's breaking it down even more and more in granular fashion. It talks about public services and development, open space and recreation, and environmental quality, this goes into, like I said, soil composition, rainwater, we're under what's called an MS4, it's a municipal separate stormwater system. It's a requirement by the Kansas Department of Health and Environment, I have to submit one each year, before, February 28th of each year, I have to submit an MS4, the reason is because of our proximity to Wichita, we have a lot of impervious surface, which has a lot of rainwater runoff, and so we have to track that. We do four measurements a year on our rainwater quality for different substances, and then we send it off to a third party for water sampling and testing. And so that's actually part of our comprehensive plan, and part of our MS4. So this is an interesting demographic pattern, and it's something to take into account, but back in 1850, ninety-plus percentage of the Kansas population lived in rural areas, closer to, right around, under ten percent lived in urban areas. Right around 1950, and as you probably know, that post-World War II, there was a big boom, a lot of development, a lot of baby boomers, as well as a lot of, in the 1950s, the Highway Construction Act by Eisenhower, that allowed for large development to happen in the United States. And since then, the trend has dramatically shifted, where less and less people have been living in rural areas, and more and more people have been living in urbanized areas, and that trend is just going to go up and up and up, where this trend is going to continue to go down, where you'll have more corporate farming over here, and then farmhands and everybody else who helps support that market will be in the rural area, where the vast majority of everyone else will be living in urbanized areas, or even suburban areas, which, you know, is just going to be catered by municipal services like water, sewer, streets, and the like. Of course, that means there's going to be a higher cost in city infrastructure, and a higher demand for housing, and that's why, as you've probably known from your recent Sutter County Tax Appraisers Report, all your property values have gone up, because, and traditional macroeconomics, if you have not enough supply and a large demand, price goes up. And so that's what you're going to continue to see over the next ten years, as more and more people move to Kansas, and more and more people want to live in urban areas, more and more people are going to look for housing, and your house is going to become more valuable. So this is a 2015 land use review of what they were proposing, what's existing, what they were hoping to see, and what's interesting about this is, of course, all the yellow is going to be single-family detached. What they are expecting is that the growth is going to be around this area, and then around this area, and you can see that they're finalizing Spring Hill over there, and now, obviously, since it's 2021, we've seen the reality of some of this, where even though they anticipated more, this is being developed, we actually developed around here, but by and large, a lot of this growth pattern is starting to play out, and so it's an interesting, something to just consider as we see some of our growth trends happening. I think by and large, our growth trends are going to head north, and we're going to head, obviously, west, we don't want to head east, because that, we're going to butt Wichita, which is right over here, so.
And I hate to interrupt, and so we approved a survey, what was it, last meeting, to study, right, pretty much, you can point it out, Mike.
Yeah, it's right around here, and then down in this area, and then right over, right around this area, I believe, yeah.
Yeah, and then is there one north?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Where was it?
I believe it was very top, right there. Uh, no, no.
No, this is 167, I think we're right, this is 167, and we were right over here, this is one area over here, and then we were over here.
Right, it's that north plot, up to the, in the right, top right corner.
Right over here?
Right, yeah, we had, we had A, B, and then we had, then we had C.
Right over here, yeah, right over here.
And so over here is, we were kind of trying to figure out how we're going to develop, try to mark our territory against Wichita, but over here, I believe that we're going to have some, like, rural water for district situations, we might have to pay, like, a royalty, or a fee, or something like that, if we have to do it, but I think rolling three different developments into one study is going to give us a good idea of what it's going to cost to bring in housing to these different areas that we're trying to mark our territory in, because one thing that I, we've noticed in trying to build our commercial, especially on the Starbond District, is that if we need well-capitalized investors to build restaurants, to build strip centers, and more developments, we have to have a certain rooftop density in that area, because why go there if they can spend their three and a half million dollars to build a, an old Chicago or whatever, somewhere else where it has the density that they want, that they desire. So, we're doing a really good job in trying to focus on bringing in those rooftops that we need, and I think once, you know, Arbor Creek, Rustic Creek, and Cloverleaf get finished, that's going to really add into that three-mile radius rooftop density that we're needing, and you're going to see our commercial developments really go bonkers, and that really helps us with property taxes, and so.
I didn't have a question before, but Mike.
Yeah, the mayor's here.
I wasn't planning on coming, I had a few free moments tonight, so I figured I'd come.
So, we've talked here every once in a while quite a bit about the, what do you call it, the entry-level housing, and the, you know, the multiple, having multiple units, or a platform.
Like duplexes.
And duplexes, even in the power complexes, and the resistance that has historically been there, and so, I'm just curious, have you talked about that, of the governing council, and, you know, how that, like you talk about with the rooftop and the density?
Right.
You know, the business owners have said a lot, we need that entry-level housing because we need those young people coming in.
Yeah, and historically speaking, young people spend money, so, you know, they don't really have kids, they don't have, so I've actually been working, and I spoke with City Administrator Brian Sokot on a possible development with bringing in apartment complexes. We don't quite know where it's going to be yet, but that, that would definitely help the rooftop density, and, and the volume that goes in, we've talked about somewhere on the Starbond District area, we're not quite for certain where it's going to be, but regardless, if we can get in a, like, an apartment complex, that's, that's going to go great. And we've got Paul Kelsey, who's doing the duplexes over there in Cloverleaf, so that, that helps out some, and how many units do we have?
Twenty-two, it'll be forty-four.
Twenty-two duplexes, yeah.
Which is forty-four units, so, over in Cloverleaf, yeah. And from what I understand too, I was, I spoke with Paul Kelsey today, and I spoke with Jack Manning, Sutter County Residential Land Analyst, and he said that patio homes and by and large rentals are flying off the shelf, there, you can't put up enough patio homes, because people that want to live in a patio home generally don't want to have a lot of maintenance, they don't want to have a yard, they don't want to have anything to deal with, they want to by and large just live their lives.
Your two ends of the.
Yeah, it's two ends, exactly, and so that's what we're seeing, we're seeing a lot of people, high-dollar citizens moving to Elkridge and Arbor Creek, who are, you know, they're going to be white collar, and a little bit more middle upper class in terms of income, but we're also seeing a lot of people that want to have that lower entry-level housing, but also a lot of rental properties, they want to see more rental properties, we have a lot of teachers that want to live in Goddard, that can't live in Goddard, and so just to meet that demand, by and large, it's.
We've got one great thing, we've got the school district, you know, I went to Goddard Schools, and that, that is an amazing school district that they have, and I've, I've talked to the superintendent, Justin Henry, on different developments that we've been planning on seeing, because they have to plan on how they're going to handle more volume of kids, and so if we bring in that maybe lower to middle class, and that's exactly what Paul Kelsey and Don Clausmeier are doing, they're bringing in that level of income stream, and typically they're starter families, so they're going to bring in kids and everything, so, yes, I'm working on something like an apartment complex. Another thing you might see here in the near future, sometime this year, I would assume, is an addition on to the Dove Estates development, I spoke to the owners, they're adding, they've got some ground there, and I think it's going to be more like, you know, like their villas that they have, but I, I don't know quite their plan, but I don't think they're going to rent them out, I think they're just going to sell the units, like, flats, and it's going to be, you know, fifty-five or older, or whatever, so, that's something, but those people don't typically spend a lot of money on development, you know, on, like, you know, the Goddard Galleria, they're not going to be going to Old Chicago, spending all night, drinking beer, and eating pizza with their friends, so, and that's what's going to generate sales tax revenue to pay off these bonds, and, you know, further more development, so.
Yeah, thank you. Housing, so we have done pretty well, I mean, in 2020, just, this is, this is from WABA data, WAB only tracks single-family detached, as you know, so this doesn't account for commercial, it doesn't account for multifamily duplexes, triplexes, or otherwise apartments, all they track is single-family detached. But by and large, we saw seventy-one percent increase from 2019 to 2020, and we ranked pretty well comparatively speaking, in terms of our population size versus other cities like Derby, like Bel Air, and the rest. I mean, obviously Wichita's going to see a massive increase, because it's Wichita, but comparatively speaking, we did pretty well, I mean, versus other ones of similar size, or even slightly bigger than our own, we did very well. And people want to build in our school district, as the mayor mentioned, we have one of the best school districts in the county, and no matter where you go, even when you're driving on 54 in Wichita, you'll see a big marketing sign that says Sea Ridge in Goddard School District, and so people want to build in the Goddard School District, as long as that school district is considered high-quality, developers want to build there because people want to live here, and that's what we're going to continue to see. Transportation, now this is kind of a little bit interesting, this is historic transportation data, these are daily, daily traffic counts, and obviously the big other dot, the more volume that you're seeing, we obviously are going to see more people going from west to east into Wichita than coming from east to west. Traffic volume is another metric that a lot of commercial restaurants want to see, they want to know what the volume is on 54, as we start to build out this way, these dots are going to get bigger, and commercial restaurants are going to take more and more interest, so not only is it rooftops, and population, and expenditures, and market potential index, but traffic volume is a big key as well, and we're going to continue to see that. So as we build things here, that draws west Wichita, these dots are going to get bigger, and as we develop around Goddard, these dots are going to get bigger, and we're going to see more commercial, and as you know, we assess commercial with county, now, as county assesses commercial, twenty-five percent, that's more property taxes for the city, and then we can have more fund money, which is basically, governing body and planning commission talks about parks, you guys are going to talk about all the fun stuff, so, that's when we actually have surplus of capital from all of our development, which is what we want to see. Public facilities, so 2015, once again, they outlined some areas where there could be parks, or potential public facilities, you know, and as, as you know, one of them was around this area off of 183rd and Maple, and we did purchase this right around here for our north park, so this was in consideration, this is Elkridge right over here, Spring Hill, St. Andrews, 183rd, Maple's right here, we bought this land for the north park, so.
How is that going to happen?
The north park? It's just a part of budgeting with our capital improvement plan, and there'll be consideration and talks with the governing body about how we want to develop that moving forward. Right now, it's in the works, and we just have to come up with a design concept, and a budget, and in an enactment process, but all of these kind of fall in line with that. But this is one of them that was considered, and so we moved on that, and of course, we swapped land with Tanganika for, off of 199, so that's something to consider over in this area as well. And once again, these are concept designs, so the comprehensive land by and large, even though it would be considered if there was a legal dispute, by and large, it's a guiding document, it's supposed to help inform and guide, it's not necessarily to be definitive, because obviously it's malleable, and things change over time, and we'll get into that as well. Plan implementation, so that's kind of part of it. Amendments to zoning ordinance, and official map, so that includes official zoning map. Action plans for goals, subdivision regulations, as we mentioned, appeals and variances, obviously that all comes before the planning commission, some of these go before the planning commission, and then the governing body, or just the planning commission. And the continuing planning process, so this is off of page 141 in the comprehensive plan, in order for the plan to remain useful as a guide for community development, the process of review and updating must be continuous. This is something we brought up before, obviously, we had a planning commission, a previous planning commissioner did mention that they've worked really, really hard on the subdivision regulations, and he was right, absolutely, every time we review, there is a lot of goals, but subdivision regulations, zoning, zoning maps, all of them need to remain malleable to be receptive to market trends as we increase and as we grow over time. Things cannot be static, because in static, you happen to lose value that could have potentially been captured, and if we don't capture that value, that value will go somewhere else, like Derby, like Mays, or someplace else, and so we want to be receptive to market trends, so that we can change as needed, and so that we don't also compromise values that the city holds dear, that planning commission holds dear, but that we can merge those two with market trends, and build a bigger and better city as necessary. And that is pretty much it. Financially speaking, there is none, legally, it's approved as a form, as you know, from 2015. Recommendations, none, there is no action necessary to receive and file, any future changes to the comprehensive plan shall be published in the city newspaper and approved first by the planning commission, and then by the governing body. Questions or comments? Pretty straightforward, I don't know if you guys looked at your attachment, who was on the planning commission in 2015, and, you know, some of you guys have been around for a while, and I appreciate your time and your tenure.
We were left out, everyone else was here.
Not often in the baby honor group.
Staff report, so as the mayor mentioned, Dove Estates is replating, Baughman Company has submitted a revised site plan for the Dove Estates memory care patio homes, after the site plan has been approved, the pre-plat and final plat will need to be approved for the replating of the patio homes, the new patio home building wants to sell the homes individually instead of having them as a buyback policy, this requires individual parcels for taxing purposes. The site plan can be approved by the city planner, being myself, but the plats, both the preliminary and the final plat, must be approved by the planning commission, and the final plat must be approved by the governing body. This has been scheduled according to Baughman to be submitted to the city for the April 12 Planning Commission meeting, so, I mean, I know we talked about this a little bit, the mayor has mentioned it a little bit as well, originally, it was going to be as a buyback policy, they were going to sell them, they were going to hold on to them, and then when somebody passed on or moved, they were going to sell them back. They don't want to do that anymore, they're going to sell it to one developer, he wants to sell them just as is, and so that's going to require a separate tax ID for every single patio home, which means a separate lot, and a separate parcel, so, that requires replating, because that's a massive endeavor, and so they are, I sent all the documents and information to Baughman, they are handling that on behalf of Dove Estates, so.
Do we know the road that's going back in there, if it's going to be a public or private?
That is the good question, and we are reviewing that. Right now, it's still going to be considered private, as far as we can tell, there is several sections, and we reviewed this, and we had a meeting, it was myself, a member of Public Works, and Harlem Four Acre, a city engineer, we went to Baughman offices, and we reviewed with, I believe it was Mike Conray, he offices, um, and we reviewed with, I believe it was Mike Conray, he's one of the surveyor engineers, and Phil Meyer. And we reviewed, uh, what was being proposed because they were downsizing it from thirty-five patio homes to thirty-one patio homes, but they wanted to keep the drive private. Um, but there was junctions where, and as, you know, Jody being an engineer, and as Wes, you know, there's sections where the street being private would intersect with a, a main going underneath it. So if we had to fix that main, we would have to tear up that private drive. So there will have to be an agreement in there that the developer will fix the road if we need to fix the main. And so that is gonna be something that has to be recorded as well. But other than that, it should be relatively good for us because of course, if the drives are remain private, if the road remains private, that's no maintenance cost that the city has to absorb, so.
So how does that work, I guess, with homeowners, I mean?
Did you put it on like an HOA special?
I was gonna say, I mean, there's gotta be some kind of...
Yes, there has to be a fund, very good.
Agreement with that private...
That's right.
Entity to have those things maintained properly and sidewalks, I mean...
Yes, very much so, yeah. And they probably would have that covered under a fund, um, to, for any maintenance costs, anything that'd be absorbed by that development, so the city doesn't have to absorb the cost.
If, if they, if they weren't to do, I mean, I'm, I mean, if the people of Dove Estates, I mean, I'm sure they will, but if they weren't to do that, does the city have some ability to, on oversight or to...
Yes, well, it's a private agreement. What will happen is there'll be a private agreement between the city and the developer, and basically it would be recorded that if, you know, we need to fix a main, it'd be all your obligation to fix the street. And so at that point, there would just be a matter of using the existing agreement. If it became down to a legal situation, I mean, that would be up to the city attorney and Brian Silcot and the mayor and the governing body to decide how they wanna determine some sort of litigation. I don't anticipate it going that way, but if it did, that would be something for the governing body and Brian, city attorney, to determine how they want it forward.
What about though, just general maintenance? I mean, just the general maintenance, not if we had to get involved with something, you know, like, I'm just thinking about like the lack, where's the city, is the city gonna get pulled, sucked into something?
It is ideal for it to be private because then, a lot of that's prevented. One of my concerns was if we make it a public road, put it on specials, well then how do we get access to our public road through private drive?
That's right, yeah.
And because it's private on both sides of it, and then if they add in a public road, well then, what do we do with our access to it? And, oh, sorry about that. Um, so I actually spoke with Jill Steiner, one of the owners, and she, I, the last time I talked to her, things could have changed, it's been about maybe three weeks ago or so, but she said that I think they're leaning towards doing a, a private road, just establishing an HOA, and, you know, pretty much getting a loan to pay for it, and then just dipping it up by each lot, pretty much, like specials would be anyways, so.
Which would be ideal for the city because then we would be capturing property taxes off of it, but we wouldn't have the overhead cost of maintenance on specials when, when those, basically those streets would come due for maintenance, the city won't have to absorb that cost. So that way, it would actually incross, increase, um, it would increase our, our basically what we can recapture off that development.
I guess that, I can't even imagine if that would be, ever be an issue with Dove Estates, but there's gotta have everything on there, right?
Now, of course, that'd have to be legally written down and a contract drafted and everything else to go forward. Rural residential zoning classification, so as the city grows, if we annex certain land by petition, they're currently zoned agricultural, it'd be in the city's best interest to have a rural residential zoning classification. To rezone these new parcels or else they'd be classified as R1, single-family detached by default. This would create a non-conformity of land uses and violate chapter two dash one-one-six of the city code dealing with livestock. So, as you know, as the mayor mentioned, and as I probably mentioned before in the past, um, Wichita is growing at a, at a pretty exponential rate, Kansas is growing at a steady rate as more and more people move to Kansas. Um, obviously we have a lot of room to grow, um, but with our, us abutting Wichita, we wanna delineate and have a strong presence of where we wanna grow versus being forced into awkward positions with Wichita growing around us, and we wanna avoid that. And so we are, are coming up with some, some conceptual ideas of how we wanna grow and how we wanna annex, and if we annex certain agricultural land or land that's actually designated for livestock or commercial livestock, um, if we did annex some of that, we actually, in our current city code prohibit livestock, so we can't annex land that has livestock on it while simultaneously prohibiting land that has livestock on it from being in the city limits. So what we would have to do is create a zoning classification that says this type of zoning classification allows for livestock, um, and supersedes, you know, chapter two verse dash one-one-six. Um, everybody else who's not on the zoning classification cannot have livestock on their land as according to the current code. Um, this will allow us to work with farmers and ranchers and everybody else around us as we annex and grow, and it'll be more advantageous for the ranchers and farmers and everybody else to work with us if we don't have to automatically classify them as being non-conforming, which could potentially devalue any property that is existing on that land if they wanted to get it appraised, because appraisers call me all the time, and they wanna make sure that everything is conforming to the zoning regulations, to the subdivision regulations. So if I were to confide in them that one of the land that we annex was all of a sudden non-conforming, it could devalue their property. We wanna avoid that by having a new zoning classification that says this is all acceptable, and not only is it acceptable, it's ideal. And that way, they don't have to feel like their land is being devalued, and we can work with them for annexation purposes, so. Is there any questions about that?
Makes sense.
Very good. Item J, Planning Commissioner comments. Open it up to comments, questions, or anything else in between.
Is it like the stuff that we talked about at the last meeting, the, the new zoning and the, you know, making those changes? How is that gonna progress? How are those things gonna progress? What are we doing with it?
I started with, yeah, I'm starting right now with a higher density zoning, potentially for Old Goddard. All these have to be, I have to work with Thatcher, I have to work with everybody else uh, in my office as much as possible to make sure that we, there's nothing that we're missing. Obviously, I have to bring it before Planning Commission, and then of course, we have to bring it before the mayor and the governing body for final adoption. All of them are being drafted right now, I've sent one of them off to Brian Silcot, the city administrator, for review. Um, right now it's going pretty good. Right now it'd be, it'd be industrial, this one is up, which would be the agricultural or rural urban, however you wanna define it. That one has been reviewed as well, and I sent it off to Brian Silcot, so we're gonna be, we're working to bring these before you guys as fast as possible. Obviously, there's a publishing requirement, so anytime it doesn't be, if anytime it exceeds that twenty days, I can't bring it for Planning Commission, I have to wait another twenty days because of publishing requirements by state law. So, you know, if it's not presented to you in April, it'll be presented to you in May and vice versa, you know, as we move forward, so, um, all these things to be considered. But, yeah. Was there anyone in particular that you wanted to see first, or anyone that you would care to see first?
No.
I could reprioritize, I mean, it just depends.
No, you're, you probably have a better feel for the poll sign, what, what the immediate or more immediate need is and...
It changes on a monthly basis.
This rural, art, you know, agricultural, I mean, it is under the farthest out.
Yes, and then interestingly...
Under the current, you know, I mean, wherever you are today.
Oh, yes, yes, yeah. So that one, the reason I was getting that one done first is because I wanted it to be brought before the Planning Commission for review, and then the governing body, and so obviously, and that wasn't even necessarily for publication, I just wanted it to be brought up for review, and I had submitted it to city administrator for review as well because it, for one reason, it reflects a lot of what Central County in Wichita already have, which is they have a rural residential zoning classification, and on that rural residential zoning classification, they allow for very large developments. And as you know, we have a, um, an urban area of influence around Goddard, and that, so every time a development's going in around Goddard, it's not in the city limits, they send me the plat for review, and a lot of them are rural residential, big lots, um, some of them with agricultural purposes. And so trying to emulate some of that language so that we can kinda get ahead of that trend of, of, of unincorporated plating and be kind of aware of that because we're gonna have to absorb all that, and then it's gonna have to go before Planning Commission for regulatory control. Um, basically, we'd be annexing a lot of Central County guidelines and Wichita guidelines, and so I'm trying to get ahead of that so that we don't adopt their guidelines when we annex, because if they have these regulations in place and then they spread it out around us, and then we annex them, we've basically just annexed what they already codified, if that makes sense. And so I'm trying to get ahead of that so that we can adopt it, and then we can move forward with the annexation process so we don't sort of get steinied with Wichita subdivision regulations. Does that make sense? So that's kinda why I'm trying to move fast on that one. But, other than that, um, we did, I did have an email about the industrial zoning, um, because they, one of the developer, I'm sorry, one of the individuals who wanted to start a business in the industrial park won the bid, and so now, since we, you know, I wasn't able to amend it fast enough because of state law and everything else, we're probably gonna have to do a conditional use permit or a special on that one, so, just depending on what they're proposing, but it's just, it's just the way it is right now, and I can't kinda get around that, so. And, uh, when they reach out to me, I'll keep you up to date when they wanna do all that, so. Other than that, April 12th, 2021, at 7:00 PM would be the next regular Planning Commission meeting. If there are no other questions or comments?
I have another question for you.
Yes?
Was anything talked about on the annexing of those four properties?
Five properties.
Five?
Five properties. I haven't, it hasn't been brought back up yet because...
Just curious.
It's a sensitive subject.
Oh, I didn't know that. That's why I was wondering if...
Yeah, no, I, um, spoke with Commissioner Klein about that today. Um, there's a lot that goes into that with annexing those properties. Um, obviously, step one would be reaching out to them first, saying, hey, would you consider being a part of the city? Um, after that, if they don't wanna be a part of the city, it would be up to the governing body and the mayor if they wanna sign a resolution for unilateral annexation, after which, if the mayor and the governing body sign a resolution for unilateral annexation, all of you would get a letter saying, please show up to this, you know, public meeting, and everyone else would get a letter as well and saying, please show up to this public meeting if you want to, you don't have to, but if you want to. And you would provide feedback about why it would make sense to annex these properties, and then after which, if the governing body and the mayor determines that based on findings of fact, the counsel given to them by the Planning Commission, comments of the public, advice of the staff, that it's reasonable to annex, they would sign a resolution saying they are in, whether they want to be or not, and then which place we would get it published, and thirty days later, they'd be in the city limits, so.
Are they rural property or something?
No, those are the, we have five potential properties that are inside the city limits, this is something that was brought up by Councilmember Zimmerman about those properties that are surrounded by the city but are not in the city. And they use city services like our streets, and they use our police department, and, but they are, don't pay any property taxes because they're technically outside the city limits, so.
How do you...
Yes, of course.
Where are we at on that, uh, on the sign?
Moratorium?
Yeah.
Bringing that up, actually.
Yeah.
Thank you, yeah.
Yeah, um, I'm drafting it right now because obviously, you know, we would want to have a workshop and, um, we would obviously wanna have a moratorium at, at the same time to basically, as we've talked about, to basically suspend that December 31st, 2021 deadline, so push off the, the mandate, and then have the workshop between Planning Commission and the governing body, and then have, invite Cindy Prohead, Alunis Neon, and everything else. So I'm drafting the moratorium right now, and I have to pass it before city attorney for review, of course, and then once it's been approved, then we'll present it to the governing body and everybody else as necessary. I believe it just has to be presented to the governing body and adopted as an ordinance or a resolution, and if it's adopted as an ordinance or a resolution for a moratorium, um, that particular section of the sign require, it wouldn't be the, all the sign requirements, it would just be the part that requires everybody to conform by the end of this year, or else they get penalized, and so at that point, we would suspend that port and then try to have a workshop where we could have the Planning Commission and the governing body there, and have a nice big powwow and talk about our feelings and how we want the sign regulations to look, and we'll go from there.
What's the general consensus with you guys, I guess?
On...
On the, the sign.
Suspending it?
Where, yeah, I guess what are you guys wanting to do?
Poll signs, monument signs.
Monument signs, requiring it, grandfathering people, and what's the...
Um, my, my point of discussion typically revolves around what the rest of the property looks like, not the sign itself. So, many of the parking lots, the, the, these signs are in, that we want to put monument signs in, look like, you know, they haven't been touched in twenty-five years, and, you know, there's no, um, landscaping or, or any attempt at all to where the poll sign itself wouldn't be...
Gets drowned it out.
Right, I mean...
Right, yeah.
But, you know, I, I don't know the monument signs on Killog or...
Is it, uh, is it a requirement that you, like, would want in mind by, because, you know, business owners, property owners, really off of, you know, the 199th area, you know, have reached out to me saying, you know, why do we have to put in monument sign when we've already established it? Which brings up a good point, and I understand, you know, we've got the Goddard Galleria, the Starbarn District, which is, I would almost consider the new development of Goddard, who require it no matter what that you have to put in a monument sign. And so they're doing it self-in, you know, inflicted pretty much because they want that development to look nice, to attract other businesses. I haven't really come up with an opinion, I guess, either, I've been kinda waiting to hear different things from you.
I think it's a tough, it's a tough sell because, you know, the frontage road doesn't really, isn't appealing either. I mean, the whole mile, except from 193rd to 199th, or, you know, two, you know, it's not like there's trees and every, you know, the, the city portion looks beautiful and, and the business side looks like, you know, looks rough, and, and just kind of, I mean, it's just the nature of that, that section in there, and, you know, monument signs are gonna look out of place, something.
I agree with that, and there are a lot of those businesses that, especially right now, are shoestring anyway.
Right.
And, and if all of a sudden you say you've gotta spend fifty grand on a monument sign, see ya.
I've come at it from the standpoint, somewhere that was my first meeting. But, uh, you know, with a engineering background, and I wrote a lot of specifications for places, is that whatever we have in place, it needs to be flexible enough that, like, we've talked about that the, the developers and the, the owners can, you know, like Jamie was saying, you know, go with their property and, and what the land use is and what the, the traffic count is and the speeds, but we need to be specific enough with our requirements around that, and I think especially on the maintenance, because it really, the, a lot of it came down to, it just needs to look good.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
You know, and, but whatever we have, it needs to be specific enough that people know what they have to do and that we, we get what we want, but not so tight that they're saying it's gonna cost everybody an arm and a leg...
Right.
Or cause them to jump through a bunch of hoops to make it happen.
Yeah.
Because you get what you write.
I, I think that new developments need to set the trend for where we're going.
And they are. Yeah, they are. I mean, the Goddard Gallery, they require, so I think the only one was Walmart, and it was because, you know, they were the first person to move in, and...
They were the anchor.
They were, they were the anchor, so they got to determine what they were gonna do. So, it wasn't a sort that we were willing to die on with, you know, that, so, but going forward, you know, they're, they make it sure that it's gonna be aesthetically pleasing.
Yeah, and, you know, and the Walmart sign kind of is to my point, you know, the area underneath it doesn't look like, you know, it's not full of trash and, you know, I mean, it's...
Right, right.
But we ought to be, you know, and it's, you know, like, we, with the, with the bronze,